Alfred involved.
Thank you.
All right, let's, I love Alfred, but I, let's bring this meeting to order. This basically Planning Board is, is simply to bring you up to date on a letter received back on late January regarding North Circuit Road and Alden Road in the National Seashore. As far as a number of clients wanting to open it up because of erosion on their previous access. I received the letter along with, from attorneys Xena, representing a few clients in the area. And he had posed a question that I didn't have the answer for, so I had to send it up to legal counsel. That's why I didn't notify any of you prior to this point. The basic question was, he had cited that state of Massachusetts had made a court determination that planning boards could review previously laid out subdivisions prior to adoption of subdivision control law within the town of Wellfleet or any town within the state of Massachusetts. In the past, the Planning Board, in the 28 years I've been on it, has always taken the position that we are not involved, do not want to be involved in this kind of situation. There was no covenant ever put on record. There was no standard as to how the road would be built, if the road would even be built. And therefore, we would be starting over on scratch on every single pre-existing subdivision. Most of these subdivisions, if not all of these pre-existing subdivisions prior to 1955, when we went to subdivision control law, were laid out with 40-foot roads, many with 40, 50, 5,000 square foot lots or greater, depending on the zoning at the time, with absolutely zero topography being done. They didn't care if you were going over a cliff. They just laid out a flat piece of paper, laid out the 40-foot roads. Most of these subdivisions, Indian Neck, Lieutenant's Island, O'Worf Road, and of course, literally the entire National Seashore. So consequently, there was no covenant ever on record. So some of these roads go over private property. Some of these roads don't exist anymore. They've fallen over the ocean. Most of the ones that you and I are familiar with, our planning board members, have been Lieutenant's Island. The distinction that the Planning Board made, however, is we never reviewed or wanted to review those pre-existing subdivisions unless a new lot was being created within that subdivision. Lots were reformed or new lots were created because it was a large lot. And I think most of the members will remember that we had a situation over on Lieutenant's Island Road where it came in as an approved or not required plan because it was subdividing a lot that they happened to have, that they could divide into two. However, the access to that lot went over somebody else's property and we denied it. That is the only time we've really jumped into this. So I sent that up to town council. Town council came back and said, Jerry, the attorney was correct that there is and has been a court case that the state found that the planning boards can, basically, if they choose to do so, regulate those pre-existing subdivisions prior to subdivision control law. We also discussed the method of how to do that, whether subdivisions would have to be now recreated. The state didn't come down with any formation as to what to do. They just said, you can do it. So this case has been bouncing around for probably two to three years. The five or six individuals that have been involved with losing access to their property, especially over the last year and a half, have been working with the National Seashore with an engineer that I just found out last week happens to be the engineer, Mr. Billy Rogers, that we hire to do and look at our road subdivisions currently that we know does a fantastic job. So in the background, while all of this has been going on for years, one of the attorneys involved had called me on the phone and said, Jerry, are you still taking, is the planning board still taking the position that pre-existing roads, subdivisions, that people have rights on, do not fall under, do not want to be under their jurisdiction? And I concurred with that. So that long, two, two and a half years has been going on that premise. Recently, as this got closer, and one of the, one or two or three or four of the abutters have questioned it, hired an attorney, that was brought to the forefront that started all of this. So this discussion tonight, number one, I'll tell everybody, I'm on vacation, number one. So I'm going to make this as short as I possibly can. And number two, I am involved with Left Bank Gallery since I own it. And almost every single one of the clients on both sides of this coin have been into the gallery and bought. After 50 years in business, you touch almost everybody in Wellfleet. So I don't feel I have any conflict whatsoever. People on both sides here. This basically meeting tonight is to bring all of the planning board members up to date. And that's what I hope I just did. What you saw in your packets tonight was the fact that the National Seashore, who borders 95% of these, 95% of the roads in that sub-area and in the entire subdivision, have been notified, have reviewed the plans that are submitted by Billy Rogers and approved them, and issued a special permit with a work time. MESA has weighed in. You've seen that letter from, from them saying there's some restrictions, but they've given it a go. I did talk to Billy when I found out he was the engineer. Asked him the situation, and I will never put words in Billy's mouth, but basically Billy said, Jerry, based on the fact the National Seashore said, I've got to work within the boundaries of the 40-foot road, they're not going to give up any additional land for curb cuts or, or slope easements or anything of that nature, or relocate those roads. We have a steep grade, but the police department, fire department have all weighed in. So basically, at this point, I think as most of the planning board members can see, any bases that if we were going to be involved, any base that we would touch, fire department, police department, national heritage, National Seashore, and engineering have all been done, have all been completed, and have been approved by all members that could possibly weigh in, that the planning board would go to. So at this point, what the planning board has is a group of individuals who have rights in these roads, North Circuit and Alden, because they are members of that subdivision to open those roads. Opening those roads is not creating a new subdivision. They are part of the subdivision. And in the past, people have opened those roads on Lieutenant's Island and everywhere. The park is a special one because in this case, the individuals had to go to the park to make sure that they were not violating anything, violating anything with tree removal and things of that nature. And the park has realized that these people no longer have access to a few of these properties. One was in danger, if not in danger of going over, and needs to be moved almost immediately. Time is of the essence. And with Mother Nature working its course for the past year and a half, especially over in this particular area, and if none of the members have seen the council hall, we've closed it. We're just getting clobbered over there. So time was of the essence. So if there is a discussion between the two parties, one feeling they wanted more information or aggrieved, and the other, who needs to get these roads opened, quite honestly, that's between, in my feeling, that's between those parties, not the business of the planning board. The business of the planning board is basically, based on where this has gone, based on what we have done in the past, based on time is of the essence, do we want to take any action whatsoever? Or we do, will you want to just leave those departments that have been involved, that have solved the problem, to move forward and complete the project? That is a synopsis. I'm throwing that out to board members for some discussion. If you feel that you want to discuss this, get into it, to the merits of it, add additional questions. We're going to have to move this meeting, probably post it a little bit differently. This is basically an informational meeting. Don't really expect the plan, the board to take any, any direction. But of course, that is the input I'm looking for from you as planning board members.
Jerry, I got a question to that point. Are there actions or decisions that we could make that are of any sort, that are within our purview?
Well, apparently, from what the state is telling me, David, or what town council is telling me, yes, there are, but as town council said, Jerry, what is, what is the planning board going to do if they can't reduce the grade, which is more than we normally prefer?
Right, yep.
If they've reached an agreement with the National Seashore, if they've reached an agreement with the MESA situation, if they are satisfied, police and fire, where are you going to go? It's obvious that you can't change the grade anymore. The engineer has done what he can do. It's obvious that these people have been working on this for two to three years. They have rights in the road. The Seashore would take an act of the legislature if they needed to create slope easements or things of that nature, which takes years.
Yeah, okay.
So to answer your question directly, I think there is, David, but as town council said, really, what are you going to gain except make it more difficult and make it take more time, and you're going to come to the same place?
And I think your point, which is very well taken, Jerry, but are not, our job not to be in the middle of a dispute of whatever sort that is going on here. And we don't have any judicial authority, obviously, in that regard. And it's not appropriate for our meeting to include that kind of debate, it would seem to me. There are other places for that debate to happen.
Yes, okay. Bonnie.
Purely for information, I just want to know if there is any opposition to this plan? And if so, who does it, who is it coming from? And then if it's so...
The opposition is coming from five people, four of which is one family on the corner of Ocean View Drive up off of one of the roads. From what you saw from the letter from Attorney Xena is that basically, I don't, I didn't read, and I may have missed it, but I didn't read, Bonnie, that there was a argument against a particular situation. It was more, number one, had we taken any action? And number two, their concerns with erosion, their concerns with grade, their concerns with other things, which National Seashore has obviously beat to death over. I mean, I was amazed, quite frankly, that National Seashore granted with, I'm sure with, with restrictions, but they see the necessity as well when all of a sudden people's access is cut off and we make it extremely difficult to, for them to even get to their property, some can't even get to their property now, that if in fact, for example, in the middle of winter, they freeze up and run out of oil and the oil tanks can't get there, who's going to be sued?
Well, they'd be liable to be, if they did against it, it'd be considered a taking. The Seashore is no different than the other outfit.
Exactly. So Seashore jumped...
They'll put them on a pedestal. They're all criminals.
Yeah, well, Seashore jumped in and said, basically, we don't want to block a kind of situation where it's a taking and say, okay, you can't open a road, and it's a form of a taking because now you can't get to your house. Same thing with the planning board. I think it's, if we make it too difficult, then if a house goes over, we have a serious problem. Did that answer your question, Bonnie?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other planning board member?
Just a question, Jerry.
Wait a minute, David, hold her hand up. I'll go ahead, your hand up first. Wait a minute.
I have a question about wetlands and whether conservation has to check in. I know it's not a wetland out there. It's the ocean. But aren't they within so many feet?
No. National Seashore assured that if that was the question, they would send them to conservation. The road is paved. It is a steeper grade. The police have looked at it. Fire have looked at it. Seashore has looked at it, and there are catch basins at the end of that road to take care of it, as you can see on the road profile. So they have done the maximum they can and probably gone overboard, knowing that the Seashore has been involved because the Seashore does everything at 110%. No, no conservation is involved in it whatsoever. Beth.
Do you want to go to David first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, David.
Yeah, just presumably on those properties because it's largely developed properties, although the Seashore does abut some of it, largely 50% abuts private properties. Now, on the paper road, is it presumed or is it assumed that the property owner controls to the middle of it?
I think the Seashore, quite frankly, is, is the owner of most of it. It's not just 50%. So therefore, no. You, you, if you've got a, if you've got a paper road, 40-foot laid out. Now, I'm not an attorney, obviously, and I don't even pretend to be.
You might have rights, but you don't own it.
That's correct. You've got the right. You've got the right. For example, if there's 100, if there's 100 lots within a pre-existing subdivision prior to subdivision control law, they basically, that's Alan, they basically have the right to open, to get to their property. Now, David, there's a question, I suppose, and you probably know this already, but for the, for the other members, that, you know, if you've got 100 lot subdivision and you've got roads near your property and you need to get to it, you should use those roads. You just can't open a road at the other end of the subdivision for the sake of opening it. I mean, that gets a little bit more difficult, but...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I get that. No, it wasn't a question. I get the immediate property.
You've got the right. Yeah. You can get to it. And obviously, the Seashore must have looked at that as far as, I would imagine, they looked at his ownership as well.
Yeah, okay. Just a question.
So Jerry, I want to thank you for bringing this to us because apparently, for the past 50 years, something like this would not have come to the planning board.
That is correct.
And so this is a learning opportunity for all of us as the world has changed. The rules have changed. And now we can, if we choose, have a voice in this procedure, or we can choose not to, which has been our stance in the past. Not that we have the choice, we just didn't have a voice. But we could still stay with having no voice or having a voice. So as I'm thinking about that, if we were to have a voice, my questions that would cause me to hesitate to be positive about this have been answered by the National Seashore, by Billy Rogers, by conservation, by all these letters of support that tell me I don't have to worry about this. It's, it's been through the mill and come out okay. So I appreciate that you've given us this opportunity. But from my point of view, I don't have anything to add to what the experts have put out. And I would just say, we've heard it. And, and thank you for bringing it to us.
I think, I think that's, thank you very much, number one. Number two, I think at a future meeting, I probably need to schedule a discussion, exactly to your point. Do we in fact want to get into these subdivisions? Lieutenant's Island, O'Worf, all of these? Or do we want to just continue on the path that we were down and have been down in the past? That, I think, is a full discussion without a, without something in front of us, number one. Without, as a general situation, before it got to a point where a road needed to be open, sort of like creating those subdivision control laws. In this case, you nailed it. Where are we going to go? It's, it's done. All the pertinent parties are involved. All the pertinent parties have agreed. If there are individuals out there that don't agree with the Wellfleet Fire Department, the Wellfleet Police Department, American Heritage, National Seashore, and the engineer, that's what courts are for, not for the planning board to settle.
So the question, the question we have to address is, do we want to go backwards to pre-existing situations like this one, like Lieutenant's Island, and have a voice or not? That's a different discussion. Because, and, and I personally think that's an individual case discussion because the situations are all going to be unique, I would suspect.
Right.
But in this case, I don't see that there's a need for us to be involved.
Or a need for an...
Jerry?
But Jerry, I think you already set the standard is that if a new lot is created, then the planning board will pipe in. If there's not a new lot created, it's really, we don't really need to see it.
And I think that's, yeah, I think it's a very good point, David. And I think that's something we can address in the future. David Meeford.
Later date.
I just want to add that it seems, I agree with what David and, and we've all said so far, but I do think that these issues are going to become more common going forward, whether it be on the ocean side or the bay side. And so it would seem to me reasonable to keep the door open to considering these. Maybe case by case, for sure, but this is going to happen. I mean, there are going to be things that are going to happen, maybe when we're all gone, but maybe not, that make this look like child's play when we start talking about what's going to happen to Commercial Street and on and on and on. So there's no question in my mind that, given what's happening with climate change and sea level rise, that the planning board ought to be ready to weigh in when we're able to, and, and depending on the case.
I agree.
I agree, David. And I think what I've learned from this now, after 28 years, I'm still learning all the time, is that when I receive a phone call as chair, only while I'm chair, when I receive a phone call as a chair asking if the planning board gets involved in pre-existing subdivisions prior to subdivision control law, my answer will be different than it was in the past. My answer will be submit something in writing, a plan of something, or describe what you're thinking about. And the planning board will at least look at it and let you know one way or the other, and take it, as Beth said, on an individual basis. But the information I give out that, no, we don't look at it, is, is, is now been changed.
Yeah, the world, the world has changed. Yeah.
If planning board's heads, members have nothing else, I'd just like to say, okay, let's, let's go on to the next agenda item and no action needs to be taken at this point. It's done.
Mr. Chairman, may I be heard?
Not really. I'm sorry. This is a public meeting. This wasn't posted that we were going to discuss, take votes or anything of that nature. It was just, do we want to schedule another appointment? Or do we feel that basically enough information has been done, ground, ground has been done? And let it happen. And if you, quite frankly, and I believe you are representing Morrow's, those individuals, if you have a problem, you have a place to go, sir.
I, I, I would like to be heard and Ms. Plant.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm sorry. No, I, I'm not. Because if you get heard, now I've got to listen to the other parties. And this, this is not something we're going to change on right now. So no, I'm sorry. So planning board members, if nothing else, minutes.
I just, could I, I understand from the correspondence, from the lawyer, that the, he claims that the planning board has to act on this plan, that we have to approve or not. And looking at the plan that has a 20% slope in the road when our subdivision by laws say no more than 10%, I think he has a point, and I would like to just...
I'm sorry, but he doesn't have a point. It, it can't possibly, number one, everybody's... Everybody's looked at the slopes, the engineer has looked at the slopes. The fire department has looked at the slopes, we're all aware that the slopes are there, the pre-existing road that got washed away had probably a twenty percent grade. Uh, so consequently, that is not an issue, if we're going to get into grades, we're going to get into another meeting. Um, and decide to open up the case. And as town council said, Jerry, what are you going to change? What is the planning we're going to change? If this was the best grade they can come up with, because when you start changing grades of this nature to go back to a ten percent grade. You now have to have slope easements to make the cut, and the National Seashore is not going to grant those slope easements.
Well, Jerry, the seashore doesn't have the land area to grant that.
Well, they do.
It's that tight.
No, I don't think so, I think in certain places they could, David, but in.
Be tight.
Would be tight, but they would have to get. Probably Congress's approval, because now they're taking their lots and converting them into roads. Because you've got to widen roads and get easements. So.
Never happened.
And it's not going to happen, so consequently. Um, a lot of these lots are very small lots, and if they go by privately owned individuals over there. And they needed to. Get this slope. Down, they would have to get slope easements from them, most of that would be probably. Right at their front door. So, how is, how is that B? Olga have already looked at all of this, the engineer has done the best he can possibly do within the layout. To get this thing moving, so. No, this is not a discussion I want to open up. Not the situation.
I just would like to, us to consider that. A lot of wealthy. Owners are going to be climate refugees in this.
Oh, this is not a climate issue, cut that nonsense out.
I, I'm sorry, I, I live.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's dribble, I don't want to hear that.
I'd like a little more respect, please.
David Rell, that is very disrespectful, she was making a point and, you know, there were more serious storms that are eroding. The ocean cliff faster, so.
We will have.
Yeah, you can disagree, but don't, you know, be so disrespectful.
Okay, let's bring it back.
Mr. Chair.
That is part of what's happening, and that's why on in, on Lieutenant's Island. When roads have gone over the edge, uh, when the town has lost land they own. Um, that people just put a road in. And it gets put in whatever the grade is, because there is no room to get slope easements. Uh, those are subdivisions, those are questions we're going to have to act in the future. Those are not questions right now. Um. So.
Mr. Chairman, could, could I please appeal?
No.
I am the lawyer who wrote.
Continue, I will have you muted. I am not going there, I am not opening this up to two attorneys to start getting in a conversation with the planning board over this at this time. There are places, sir, for you to do that. And this is not the meeting, number one, to do it. And number two, there are places for it. So we have moved on, no discussion, no vote, we have moved on to our minutes, thank you very much. So members, any, um. Anything on the minutes that were. For the last meeting, for changes, I know Bonnie had something, she had a question on clarity.
Yes, and I, I sent the wording to you and Karen, that what I thought the correction should read.
Um. I read it over. Karen, did you? I don't have it in front of me because I'm, I, again, I'm on vacation, so. And I don't have that ability to pull it up and I didn't bring the paper.
Yeah, so can I explain? Then, yeah, basically it was just for clarity, there were like two. On the top of page two. Of the minutes, it's a motion, uh, presented by me. And it, it kind of collapses two different decisions. You know, one of the decisions.
Is this Bonnie, is this on the special permit one, or is this on the repeal of it completely?
Well, that, that's just it, the, the repeal completely. Ended up getting. That the, uh, the motion to withdraw. Repeal, wait a minute. The, the, the motion to withdraw the intended use. The motion, to withdraw the motion to have it be by special permit. Was kind of collapsed into the same sentence. With the motion that we agreed on. Which was to have it be an excluded or prohibited use, so then the email that I sent to Karen was just separating those two. So that it was clear that we agreed that it's a excluded, um, use. And we withdrew the motion to have it be by special permit. And the way the minutes were written, I, I read it over like two times and I thought, no, wait a minute, this isn't. You know, so that's why I sent the correction.
Karen? Karen?
Yeah, yes.
Do you, do you see where? Potentially, um, Bonnie is seeing that. Conflict, can we move it to a separate paragraph, does it seem like it's? It's run on?
I, I'll do whatever you want, I didn't, I don't see it, but that, that's okay, I don't, I don't matter, so just, um. We'll just have to not approve the minutes and then somebody's going to have to rewrite it and.
No problem.
I can, I can with, I can put into the chat my, um. What I proposed.
You can't, you can't do chat.
Can't do that.
You can't do chat.
All right, Bonnie, what you did is you did submit something to my, um, to Karen, who sent it out to me regarding the change, correct? Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to wait till I get back, I will talk to Karen. Uh, we'll look at it. And we will not take an action on the minutes tonight. It's not imperative, we'll move it over to the next meeting and take a look at it and. See if we can clean it up.
Yeah, I mean, it was just for clarity.
There's nothing changed, I, I, I don't think you changed anything in. The fact of what we did, it's just a matter of how it's, how it's. Potentially run on and not clear, clear as possible, because it was two articles, you know. So we'll look at it, we'll put it on the next meeting.
Yeah.
And if anybody else has got any input on that. Uh, certainly get something to Karen on it, um, Olga.
On the, on the. Uh, issue of distribution of materials, I would have liked some mention. That I requested, and not for the first time, that our minutes be. Posted in PDF format with the agenda on the town calendar. For purpose.
Whoops. She got muted.
She muted.
Ah, okay. Um. Let me see where I was, I, I wanted to make, um, add something to distribution of materials, if we're going to change. The meeting minutes in any form to mention that. Uh, I requested, not for the first time, that the. Uh, materials that we get are posted with the agenda in PDF form on the town website where the calendar is.
And was that just, I'm trying to remember, was that discussed?
We discussed that, uh, and maybe someone else can acknowledge that, and I just thought. You know, put that in there, that I am requesting. Well, not only this, that. We distribute it to the public via the calendar with the backups, the, uh. You know, for instance, the letter from the lawyers, lawyers, um. I'd also mentioned that. I wanted us to use the Province Town Independent and Ryan Curly weighed in on that, but there's no mention made of that. And I might as well say the word council is spelled incorrectly. So if you're going to do the meeting minutes, those are my suggestions.
Very good. All right. That's it, thank you all very much, um, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Our next meeting?
Our next meeting, that's one of the. We're back on schedule at this point. Um. I have not heard anything from town council. As of yet on the two articles by the selectmen. Um.
Uh huh.
But I. I'm not concerned about it because I'm not too sure at this point. What's happening with town meeting. Um, so. As soon as I get something from council. You will get that information. Immediately, you won't even be, if, if it comes in on a Monday, you're going to get it on a Monday. Um. So you can review it. Um, for whatever meeting we schedule, but I get it, we've got to schedule it, but I can, I can let you all know that. And. The clock is not ticking and we don't have a real problem, I just got to work within the sixty days. From the time the select board sent it over to us. Um. There was something. Possibly coming up on a, on a possible amendment on the ADU. I don't think it's going to happen, um, but. Everybody's on, on target as to what, what the meaning of it was and the intent of it was, so. Building a specter is, is okay and no problems, all right? Thank you very much, meeting adjourned.
Enjoy the rest of your vacation, Jerry.
Thank you, take care all.